I find it very pleasant to be there. I do hold that. Yeah, I'm very glad you're here. You so comfortable. There was a little bit of a change. I mean, I see. I think the same. If the boys say, oh, yeah, I'm happy. So, yeah, we're excited. It's just been a minute for me. But it didn't really last long. But for your mind, they're still not stable.
Testing.
Thing testing. Think my battleship.
You guys. Yeah. It's probably not.
We started at seven.
This is what I was thinking. In video, she did.
We need to do this by fourteen. Right. Well, you know, there's something else. I just think I would ask you. Yes. You know.
I'm sure. Is that, yeah, I'm off here. Well, you should. I got.
All right. Hold that.
I don't think.
I thought. Three weeks. At least.
Recording in progress.
Fugilations to the five. I think two to three. You're a public project.
Dan. One nation. And if it is all, we're going to be in just control. It's fast.
Welcome everyone to our city council meeting for September eighteenth. Really nice to have you all here. Uh, just a couple of notes before we get started. We do have all of us here on the dais, several members of staff, but we continue to have members of staff and people joining the pub from the public virtually. So I go back and forth between my computer screen and those of you in the room. Give me a second.
Yeah.
You take breaks every ninety to one hundred and twenty minutes between items. With that, we begin everything with an open comment period. And this is an opportunity for anyone from the public to speak on an item who will not be taking public comment on during the public hearing later in the agenda. So.
Thank you. Sorry, everyone. All right. So each person has up to four minutes to speak for a total of twenty minutes. Uh, I do use a variety of methods to keep track of time. So there's the little stoplight here. There is a countdown on the wall. And if I do interrupt you, it's because we want to make sure that everybody who is interested in speaking does have a chance to speak. Uh, if you have materials to share with the council, please do hand them to our clerk, clerk Geisler, and she will pass them out to us. Your comments should be directed towards me as the presiding officer of the meeting. And certainly we welcome comments of of all kinds about city issues and feedback, but we do ask that you stay respectful in our council chambers. We don't respond dur- during public comment to your comments and questions, but we want to make sure that you give staff the uh your contact information if you do have items of follow up. You'll be invited to speak in the order that you have signed up. And again, I will be going back and forth between those joining virtually and in person and ask the clerk to alert me if somebody is raising their hand. And uh, for those of you joining virtually, if you would press star nine or use the raise hand function in Zoom, sorry, I'm just signing in, to let us know if you have a comment, but we will start with Westland. Come on up. Please introduce yourself and you have four minutes.
Hi, I'm Wes Lund. Thanks for letting me talk again. I'm uh responding to these numerous tax increases that are being asked of us at multiple levels of government institutions. Um, not just the state and federal level, but the tax increases at the county level, the city level, and in addition to that, the school board level. So I'm I'm reminded of the first time I spoke on this microphone when I asked why my, uh, sorry, usual technical difficulties. I can fix this for you if you hire me. I swear to God. So I can fix this. I have the tools. Okay, Scotty. Gotta have thirty minutes. Um, what I'm here to talk. I like to see you laugh, Brooke. Sorry. What I'm talking about is the first time I spoke in this room was before the county commissioners, when I told them that before returning from overseas life, I had searched for and purchased a house that I could afford. It was affordable housing for me. And then my property taxes were going up. And they increased and they increased. And I said to then uh, the guy who was in charge of it, Mark Kropsky. I said, I'm gonna speak on the microphone and talk about it. And I came here and then one of his plebes from the back of the room started shouting out information about my family. Very odd. I did get the offer. I have the emails. I did get the offer of an apology. I did get the offer of an apology for that outburst from the back of the room. And the guy was in his twenties, so I said, ah, I'll let I'll let it go. Because, you know, I remember when I was young too. But it had nothing to do with my property tax increase going on. But fast forward, I mean, my property taxes have gone up every year. And I don't quite see what I'm paying for. Especially in light of green energy. The buses we've now purchased, the batteries, again, from overseas. Child labor notwithstanding. My issue about lithium pools, I've made quite clear in a variety of ways. I also just have to wonder, the management of our Rochester Public Transportation, air quotes emphasized, public, paid for with taxpayer dollars, and yet sold to a foreign equity company called EQT based in Sweden. Hyper confused because, I mean, I thought white people were bad. But Swedish interests EQT is normally a chopping block company that sells off assets nineteen eighties style. Think uh, what was the movie with Michael Douglas? Uh, Wall Street. Selling off the assets, but they turned around instead and they sold it to Transdev, a French company. Transdev, which is thirty-four to forty percent owned by a German company called the Rethmann Group. The Rethmann family is one of the top ten wealthiest families in Deutschland, in Germany. And they have the controlling operating interests of the Rochester Public Utilities. I'm hyper confused because I thought, you know, colonizers are super duper bads is around here. Maybe that's just the people who live here. By the way, I am more Native American Indian than Senator Elizabeth Warren. I'm of the Algonquin group of the Abenekki clan. And I'm sorry if some liberals are offended to me saying Native American Indian. Supposed to say first peoples or whatever, BIPOC term they come up with. The label people. My time's up. Are you kidding me? Anyway.
I'm fast.
I'm just sorry. That that was so much fun.
And send me.
Thank you. I'll see you guys next month. Rethmann Group, German.
Clerk Geisler, is anyone joining virtually that would like to speak? Again, use the raise hand function and press star nine. Oh, all right. Carl Eric Gentis, Gentis.
Members of the council. I am Reverend Dr. Carl Eric Gentis, a resident of Rochester, serving as lead pastor of Good Shepherd Lutheran Church in southwest Rochester. I speak today on behalf of an ecumenical group of pastors who have concern for our fellow residents who are without housing and the negative effects that the criminalization of homelessness through the proposed encampment ordinance could have on them. The rise in homelessness has been keenly felt by myself and my congregation. Good Shepherd has served meals at the Dorothy Day House every Tuesday night for over thirty years. For many years, we welcomed families to live in our church as part of the work with Family Promise of Rochester. There is not a week that goes by that I do not get approached by people who feel that they have nowhere else to go, having exhausted the few resources that are available to them or having had negative experiences with those resources and seeking alternatives. In my attempts to help them, I have felt joy once secure housing has been achieved, but I has have also been frustrated when those that I try to help are resistant to what I believe would be best for them. In this regard, I sympathize and appreciate the work of our city officials and employees who seek compassionate resolutions to our collective problem every day. The emotional toll of this work must be taken seriously. My purpose today is to let you know that we are paying attention. We will be reaching out to you in the coming weeks to learn and understand the issues better from your perspective. It is our sincere hope that a comprehensive plan to address the needs in our community can continue to take shape. A plan that lives up to Rochester's worldwide reputation as a place of care. We believe the proposed ordinance will only serve as a Band-Aid covering an economic and cultural wound. A wound from whom the for whom the burden of care will be shifted to private business and nonprofits who are already at capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Shannon Smith. Please introduce yourself and you have four minutes.
Thank you, council members. Uh, my name is Reverend Shannon Smith. I'm one of the co-pastors of the congregational church here in southwest Rochester. I am here as part of the Isaiah clergy group and as a minister in this community to ask some questions and to express concern over the drafted ordinance from the police department involving encampments from our homeless neighbors. Uh, our main concern is that this will simply be an attempt to move people around rather than to deal with the real issues that are causing homelessness that include low wages, complete lack of affordable housing, record numbers of addiction, and so much more. We are curious if some of the increased funds that the police department received from the state budget surplus could be invested in finding a position for social workers or some other outreach to be primary city liaisons with our homeless population and take some of the burden off of our police department who are already doing work that is far outside of the capacity of what they should be expected to do. Um, the final thing I would like to uh, address to you all is I would like to challenge the narrative that the homeless population here in Rochester is just people coming from outside areas to take advantage of our myriad of um, options for care that are available here. Um, there are people that come here to get care in many different ways. The people that we are building a community with aren't all able to keep it together to pay the bills, to do the mortgage, to get their kids to school, to pay their taxes. But they deserve dignity. Even if they came from somewhere else, they are here now. That makes them part of our community. They are our neighbors. We care deeply and profoundly about how we treat our neighbors who have to bear the brunt of the social injustice around us and who tend to suffer more. I hope that you will consider these concerns as you make plans for dealing with homeless population in Rochester and to remember that no matter where anyone lives, they deserve dignity and respect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Casey McGregor.
Hello, Mayor, Council, Casey McGregor. I'd like to start today by giving a huge shout out to the school resource officers that continue to do their work here in Rochester's school system. The legislation that was written against them is awful. And by continuing to do their work in here in Rochester shows their commitment to the safety of children. So please thank your SRO for the work that they do. Let's talk taxes. Beatlesong Taxman, written in nineteen sixty-six. Let me tell you how it will be. There's one for you, nineteen for me, because I'm the tax man. Yeah, I'm the tax man. Should five percent appear too small? Be thankful I don't take it all because I'm the tax man. Yeah, I'm the tax man. If you drive your car, I'll tax the street. If you try to sit, I'll tax your seat. If you get too cold, I'll tax the heat. If you take a walk, I'll tax your feet. Hey, you did that. You tax sidewalks. Oliver Anthony, Richmond, north of Richmond, twenty twenty-three. Living in the new world with an old soul. Richmond, north of Richmond. Lord knows, they all just want to have total control. Want to know what you think, want to know what you do, and they don't think you know, but I know that you do because your dollar ain't beep. And it's taxed to no end because Richmond, north of Richmond. There's fifty-seven years between the dates of these two songs. Both can relate to the times we are living in right now. We don't have to go north of Richmond. We can look here at city council for wasteful spending. We can look at our local school system for wasteful spending. The tax dollars that people have worked so very hard for are shown very little respect. I feel like in Rochester, the motto is new is always better. Tear the old stuff down. And then what happened to taxes in St. Paul, Minnesota, twenty twenty-three? I worked with Representative Dwayne Palm on some of this information. Uh, before Democrats changed the budgeting to include automatic inflation, it was nineteen billion surplus. Democrats spent it all. Then Democrats passed a nine point six to nine point eight billion in new taxes. Democrats also increased the state budget about forty percent. Nine point eight billion in unnecessary taxes and fees. Two point two billion in business taxes. Three point eight billion in transportation taxes. Three billion in paycheck taxes. Eight hundred million in housing taxes. All of this hitting your middle class the hardest. After hearing these numbers, how can you look at the citizens of Rochester and ask them for more? The city's levy this year is nine point four four percent after last year's combined levy of seventeen point four five percent. Sales tax increases continue on everything. If passed, the city's referendum, the vote does not come back to the people for twenty-four years. I will be sixty-seven years old the next time I would be able to vote on this tax. I have read the legislation and the school board referendum has a one-time right to renew at ten years. Unless the question on the ballot says they are not renewing, you have to look at the question as they're asking for ten million for twenty years because the vote will not come back to the people. That is two hundred million. For what? How much referendum money follows each student? How much each classroom? Or is it just gonna go sit at the Edison Building and administration? What did they do with the COVID money? Just say no to the tax man. Vote no September twenty-second till November seventh. Just say no to the tax man.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All right, Micah Johnson.
Howdy, Micah Johnson, resident of Rochester. Uh, speaking as a, not as a representative of anyone but myself, no, no business interest or anything in this case. Uh, I I got a chance to hear Lauren Jensen speak a couple of weeks ago at a community event. Wow, it was fantastic. It was amazing. The amount of work she had been doing and the level of competency she brings to this. Whatever you're paying her, double it because she's just doing a great job. Speaking of, I did a little digging on her position and I found out that it's uh, only seventy percent funded by the city, thirty percent funded by a grant money. I believe the McKnight Foundation. I was kind of surprised by this, given that environmental sustainability is one of our foundational principles. I started wondering, uh, surprised that not only is that department only one person, but we're only funding seventy percent of it. I was starting to wonder, are there any other departments that are only one person? And we're only funding seventy percent of it. Maybe the city administration, the city attorney, city clerk, human resources, public works. Now, all of them are doing really important things. Don't get me wrong. Those are great farmers, are great people. But every single one of those departments is more than one person. And more than seventy percent funded by the city. And none of them are listed in the foundational principles. So clearly, I came to the conclusion that environmental stewardship, I don't think, is one of our foundational principles. And we should probably remove it from the foundational principles. Good luck with that. Or maybe our budget should follow our principles. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Adam Busby.
Good evening, City Council, Council President, Mayor. Um, the reason why I'm here today is to talk about the ZIPS program. We haven't had an a vested interest in while in the ZIPS program as far as uh, the ATU. Uh, I'm Adam Busby. Union rep for the for uh, ATU Local Ten O Five. Uh, until recently and uh, the looks like the dispatchers, uh, that should have been union all along will be joining us here shortly. Once again, we get come down to poor customer service due to lack of paying enough to retain a workforce. Once again, the reason why this is happening is two reasons. Number one, the unit, the ZIPS drivers are not unioned, so they doesn't don't have anybody like myself to fight for a fair wage. Number two is the ZIPS program has been contracted out twice for the service. So it's contracted from the city to Transdev. Transdev then turns around and subcontracted to Sun Transportation. With two corporate entities with their hand in the money pot, there's no longer any money to pay the drivers who are actually doing the work serving our most vulnerable people of this area. My sister-in-law is mentally disabled. She does not live any longer in Minnesota. Um, however, uh, she did for twenty years. Um, so this is kind of something that's near and dear to my heart. I'm not sure why, and I see it again with the microbusing RFP that went out. I believe it was last week. Why is the city continuing to stick to this failed model of hiring this stuff out? Therefore, we can't get the people that actually do the work paid enough money to serve who they're supposed to be serving. It's absolutely baffling to me. I don't understand it. I'll never understand it, but the ZIPS program's broken. It's been broken for a very long time. And something other than hiring two more people for the city needs to be done to fix it. Um, I see a lot of the folks from the city transit administrator side. I see Nick on a daily basis. I see Michael Valverde on a daily basis. I'm there forty hours a week and I can't tell you the last time I see Missy Yance, Yance. Have no idea. Uh, I know she's supposed to be over transit, but why does she not stop in on a regular basis to check in? I don't know where she's at. I don't know if she stays next door, never walks through the door and comes, checks on anything, have no idea. But uh, maybe that's something that can be looked at as well. As well as hiring uh, to try to better this program. Once again, it 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 serves the most vulnerable people. And I personally have witnessed people stuck out snowstorms, stuck out ice cold weather for hours waiting on behind buses because they don't have the drivers. It's unacceptable. Thank you very much as always for your time. I really do appreciate the chance to get up here uh, to be able to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Busby. Uh, Nellie Pearson.
Uh, good evening, President Carlson, uh, council members, Mayor Norton. Uh, just here tonight, actually.
Just here tonight, actually inviting you all to the chamber event that happens at Reagan Outdoor Advertising on Thursday from four thirty to seven thirty. We're happy to host the Business After Hours event with the Rochesterary Chamber of Commerce. So for our community members, certainly want to invite them and encourage them to get out if you're members of the chamber and, and encourage the staff and council that can attend to make it that evening as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We just have about three minutes left. Two or three minutes. Is there anyone else who didn't have a chance to speak who would like to? We'll go ahead and close the open comment and officially call the meeting to order. Clerk Geisler, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keen.
Here.
Councilmember Bransford.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Council President Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Present. Thank you. All right, I will turn it over to our city administrator, Allison Zalms, for her report.
Thank you, Council President, Council members, Mayor Norton, members of the public. We do also have some teammates here, so thank you for being here. Just wanted to always start out with thanking them for always serving the community with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence in mind. So thanks to all our teammates here and out there in the world for doing their work in that manner. Always appreciate your work. This actually occurred on September fifteenth, but we want to thank Kyle Meyer House, Brett Knapp, and Travis Rigott for their work in emergency management for the city of Rochester. That was in Minnesota Emergency Manager, Proclaimed Emergency Manager Appreciation Day. So just want to thank them for always be looking at how to protect us and be prepared for something. It's always best to be prepared before an incident happens. So that's something they've been working really hard across the organization and the community to help prepare us for. So thanks for all your work. Also mentioned, we have a transit system in the city of Rochester, and Tri Transit Week is actually this week. So there's a number of different activities going on to get folks a little bit more acquainted to the transit system who maybe have not experienced it yet. So please check that out. You can figure out all the information on rptride.com, and there's also been a lot of information going out on other media channels on behalf of our transit partners. Then just letting folks know that Thursday of this week is the DMC Annual Meeting. So if people are planning to attend, it starts off at four o'clock, goes through six o'clock. And that will be over at the grassy area east of the Zumbrow Lutheran Church near Soldier's Field. A couple more things here. Perhaps exciting for people, Cascade Lake Celebration, Sunday, September twenty-fourth, celebrating some additional work that's been happening there with the amphitheater in partnership with the state. So we will be celebrating that from eleven AM to three PM over at Cascade Lake Park, so please join us there. And then just letting you know that we will be having another public open house informational session regarding the sales tax extension. It's not an increase, it's an extension. That's forthcoming on Wednesday, September twenty-seventh at seven PM over at the Rochester Public Library Auditorium, hosted by the League of Women Voters, and you can find more information on the library's website. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Ms. Zalms. Mayor Norton.
Thank you. I have a few things today. I'll start with a proclamation. I was going to end with that, but let's just start with it. This is a proclamation that reads, whereas September is National Fall Prevention Month, and whereas falls are the leading cause of fatal and non-fatal injuries among older adults, and whereas falls are the leading cause of hospitalized injury in the United States for children zero to fourteen, and whereas most falls are preventable, and whereas the city of Rochester, Minnesota, the Rochester Olmsted County Fall Prevention Coalition, and the Mayo Clinic Level One Pediatric and Adult Trauma Centers are committed to raising awareness, educating, and collaborating on resourceful ways in our community to reduce incidence and severity of injury related to prevent, injury related to preventable falls. Now therefore, I, Kim Norton, Mayor of the City of Rochester, Minnesota, hereby proclaim September eighteenth through September twenty-second as Fall Prevention Week in the city of Rochester. And witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the corporate seal of the city of Rochester to be affixed this eighteenth day of September twenty twenty-three. So I will present that to the groups that I mentioned, who are really working hard to get information out to our community to try to prevent falls. Before I go through the slides, let's just leave it at the mayor's report here for a minute. I don't have my clicker today, so I'm gonna have to talk staff through that. I just want to say, this is falls a really busy time, as is spring. All of us get invited to many events. Some of them this past week that were worth mentioning were Welcoming Week, which was really just a beautiful opportunity for us to welcome some of our new immigrants who have been sworn in as citizens of this great country. And we were able to be there with them, hear their stories, and celebrate with them. So that was really, a really delightful day. We've had bonding tours recently, so some of our legislators have been in town, and we've been taking them around, showing them our projects, which is always kind of fun. I think we've still got a few more left, but we're working on those. We had a group from What Works Cities, which is an organization that we're trying to get certification in, increased certification. So they were here interviewing staff, and we had a really nice time with them, being able to talk about the direction that we're heading as a city, using data and learning to balance data with community desires and how to do that well. So that was kind of a nice meeting. We did also have our second homelessness task force meeting. I know there were some people here earlier. They've left. But it looks like we're moving in the direction of trying to have an overflow center or place for people who, when the warming shelter is full, as the days get colder, that we have room for overflow. So we're working toward that. I think some of our nonprofit and community members are interested in kind of moving ahead with getting community support for that. And part of that, you know, we're asking our partners in the community, some of which were here just a few moments ago, to help us. This is going to take funding. May take a space. We're going to look at several opportunities for space for that. But we really, we have a housing crisis. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. This board has dealt with it. And we're continuing to deal with it, as is the county, and they'll be moving forward with the new, hopefully, I think they've applied for a grant, or they will be applying for a grant to move forward with the new Housing Stability Center. But that's going to take between twelve and eighteen months to, to open up. So we're looking for short-term solutions to try to get us to that point, and it will take community to step up and help us out to meet those needs. Also, the comments were made earlier about the ZIPS program. And I did want to make sure, because I talked to one of you, the council members, earlier this week, and found out that they were unaware that our fellow from Harvard is here for two years, and ZIPS is one of the programs he is trying to work on to see if he can't make improvements. So it's one of the many things he's working on, but I just did want to point that out, that that is his focus area, because we know we have an issue with steps. So then, if we can go to the next slide, I'll just quick run through some things that are just up there. Some of them you've heard before. Chalk the Block is on September thirtieth. This is kind of a new version of something that our neighbors and others have been doing off and on for several years, even during the pandemic. But it will be from nine thirty to two AM to two PM, not two AM, two PM at Grand Park, and they're going to do something different. It will be on the, in the parking lot. There'll be professional artists, as well as anyone from the community that would like to come to participate, to do a little artistry and poetry. So it'll be just a fun community building event. Next slide. I've been working on the Hunger Nutrition and Health Task Force. We're pulling together, we have one for Olmsted County. This will be specific to Rochester to kind of lay out a plan based on some initiatives that are happening kind of state nationwide. Our state has some cities participating as well. So just wanted to give you a heads up. It's, it kind of aligns with Move with the Mayor. Just trying to keep people active and healthy. Councilmember Kirkpatrick, I think, is going to help me with the initiative on the, at the Feast Event that's coming up to try to help folks understand that buying local, using our local vendors, the farmers markets that we have in town is good for the energy environment and sustainability, as well as for their good health. So lots of fun activities coming up. The next slide just is, just quickly to let you know, the city participated in the National League of Cities Grant Program, where we got grants for three area nonprofits. One of those three was Cradle to Career. They studied the informal childcare network that we have in this community to try to understand what's happening, particularly for some culturally specific needs, and they're going to reveal their research that they've been doing as part of that grant that we got, and we've been working with them on. Brooke was the city lead on that particular, one of the three grants. On October fourth, they're going to release their information, and I've, I haven't read it. I've glanced over it. It's sixty-some pages long, but really excited. I went to the conference, the summit in Nashville with a team from the state, and they're very interested in what we're doing because we're delving in on an, an area that people don't know as much about, which is family, friends, and neighbors, and culturally specific childcare. And lastly, I have boards and commission vacancies. Again, the music board isn't on here. We still have a Board Six Music Board opening. We do have a, a new library board opening. And we potentially will have a couple more openings in the next month, but as just a reminder, this is a place for citizen participation, and come January, that is kind of the, the month where people have reached their maximum service, if they've been on a board or commission for two full years. And so we will have some openings again in January, so I encourage people to go out there on the website, put in an application. It's possible that one of the commissions that you have real interest in will have an opening come the first of the year. So just trying to prepare for that. And I would also add one last thing, and it's not on a slide. Mayor's Medal of Honor happens every year in December. It's been going for many, many years now, and so be thinking about people in this community that have done outstanding public service above, above and beyond. And please put a, an application in for them to receive a Mayor's Medal of Honor. If you looked at the list over the last thirty years or whatever, thirty-five years, what, forty years, I'd have to go look. It's been around for a long time. It's a remarkable list of exceptional people in our community, and we know there's more out there, so we'd love to have you nominate someone. And that's it.
All right. Thank you for that report, Mayor. We will move on to approving the order of the agenda.
I have a point of disorder. It looks like the four monitors on this side are not working.
I was just going to ask that. Did you turn your monitor off, or is it just not working?
That's the most famous I've seen question in the year.
Well. Yes. Technology has not been our friend today, so. I don't know. Did you unplug it for a minute and then plug it back in?
Reboot.
All right. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda? Otherwise, a motion.
I move to approve the order of agenda. Second.
All right, Councilmember Wall, you have the floor.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, so I know Councilmember Wall is pulling item F sixteen from the consent agenda. Councilmember Dennis, what did you decide about F thirteen?
I appreciate the staff who went and answered a lot of my questions. I still have a lot of more emphasis on the energy transition that's happening in the city, but I will withdraw my, my polling of that item, please.
All right, thank you. So if there isn't anything else, I would invite a motion to approve and block items F one through fifteen and F seventeen.
So moved. Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen.
Nothing to add.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So item F sixteen will be discussed under reports and recommendations. Okay, so we do have three public hearings tonight. I always take a minute to go over the procedure before we will move into item G one. So just a reminder, this is, we start with a staff introduction or presentation on the topic. Then the applicant or representative of the applicant has up to ten minutes to speak before we open the public hearing. Members of the public have up to five minutes, of course, with the encouragement of keeping comments brief and concise. With unlimited time, but five minutes each before we close the public hearing. The applicant has a chance to provide a rebuttal for up to five minutes before we then open up for council members to ask questions of staff or the applicant. We then invite a motion, discussion, and vote. So we will move on to item G one, our first public hearing, which is the Major Land Subdivision. Number CD twenty twenty-three zero zero nine plat by Pine Southwest, to be known as Ponderosa Pine. And Elliot Mueller is on for all of our public hearings, so why don't you kick off item G one?
Good evening, Council President, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Elliot Mueller with Rochester Community Development, and I'll be introducing this application before you tonight. The location of the site is southeast of Ponderosa Place Southwest and just west of Highway fifty-two in southwest Rochester. And their request is the re-subdivision of an existing fifteen lots consisting of six point seven nine acres into a new twenty-two lot subdivision, to be known as Ponderosa Pine. As you know, when we get applications in, we send it out to referral agencies, so all the way from Minnesota DNR to Rochester Public Utilities, to Public Works. And it's off of those comments that we receive that we base our conditions for approval on. And whether or not we're going to support the application moving forward with the recommendation. And so tonight, we are recommending approval, or we recommended approval to the planning commission, and they are forwarding that recommendation of our pool with conditions to you. And I'll stand for any questions you might have on that one.
All right, thank you. So would the applicant or representative of the applicant like to speak? Mr. Twain, are you here for G one? I see you signed up on the public hearing sheet, but I think you meant as the applicant, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, please introduce yourself, and you have up to ten minutes.
Good evening, President Carlson, members of the council, Mayor Norton. I'm Bill Twain with W C Consultants. We're working with the owner applicant, Pine Southwest LLC, and he's in attendance this evening. He's replating subdivision. I've been plating many years ago for patio homes. It's a little different style residential home, slab-on-grade style. To kind of also condition them, or to build them to allow for handicapped accessibility, handicap structures inside, doorways, bathrooms, whatever. You don't have to be handicapped to buy one, but he's trying to gear it towards people who, seniors particularly, who would need to have that sort of thing. We had a neighborhood meeting on this subject, and the issue that really came to light was the neighbors have some issues with water pressure. There's an extensive memorandum from Wade Newbar, Rochester Public Utilities, indicating that the development of this property will not hinder their pressure or supply. What we are doing, what our client is doing, he's extending a water main over ninety feet through his subdivision to get it closer to the connection that needs to be made in the neighborhood outside his subdivision to be able to get better water pressure. There are individual pumps available to boost that pressure. He found one is willing to share with the neighbors, inexpensive and very effective. The other thing that he is spending money on is to finish the subdivision previously started by another developer. So outside of his subdivision, he's spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to build a detention pond to fix a road. That is nothing, that is not a part of his subdivision, but he's willing to do that. There are five conditions listed on page one sixty-seven of your staff report. We are, our client is agreeable to those. I did want to mention number three for the Parkland dedication. When the letter first came out from Parks Department for the required dedication amount, it was fifty thousand more than what it actually is. And we have it electronically here tonight, the amended letter that reduced it. So as you approve this, I just want to make official on the record that we're agreeing to the lower Parkland dedication amount as presented by Jeff Feas at the Parks Department. I know it's not in your packet. I have it. I can send it electronically to Mr. Mueller. Do you have that?
Yeah, the, it should be, well, we can get.
Yeah, we'll get some clarification afterward.
Okay. And if there's any questions come up during the hearing, I'm happy to respond to those.
All right, thank you, Mr. Twain.
Thank you.
We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Come on up. Introduce yourself, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, Council. My name is Dana Leibachuk. I'm an architect in Rochester, and I've heard the term "not in my backyard" multiple times. This project is literally in my backyard. I am at fourteen ninety-one, and it will back up against this property. I, Mr. Twain mentioned the, the water pressure issue. That is a real issue where we live on top of the hill there. I'm at fourteen point seven PSF for my, or PSI for my water pressure. The average home in Rochester is between thirty and fifty, which means I can either take a shower or water my lawn. I can't have both. And running two sprinklers is, is impossible. This is a real issue, and the cost of those pumps are about two thousand dollars apiece. Mine lasted ten years. We have neighbors who have gone through a pump about every two years since they've been up there. So this is a, this is a real expense for a lot of people up there. Mine's out, and I was hoping that, that we would have a connection. I've spoken with RPU in the past about this, this property and what it's going to take to get water pressure. And it would, it would. And it would, it would involve a connection to the south about a mile or two miles into them into the main loop. And my understanding was that was not going to happen anytime soon. So adding twenty two more houses would 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 put up more pressure or would put more you know, demand for the limited water pressure that's there right now. That's really my major issue, since he mentioned the cost of the pumps is inexpensive. That's not really true. At two thousand dollars apiece, I don't consider that inexpensive, and I need to replace mine right now. Another issue that that is there is where the storm retention pond or water retention pond is located. That's a valley right now that's full of trees and it provides sound blocking between Highway fifty two and the neighborhood. If you look at where that's at, that whole section will have to be clear cut. I don't know if anybody's, if you've been out there seeing pictures. They're going to have to be clear cut and that'll that'll add a lot of sound transmissions from Highway fifty two directly into the neighborhood. It's not a huge concern. If you've been up there, you would understand kind of what I'm talking about as far as the number of trees and the impact that that would have on that. But that's the only issue that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Is there anyone else would like to speak on this item? If you're joining virtually, use the raise hand function or press star nine. Let me just pull up my list. I see there's a Mary Jane. If you would unmute yourself and introduce yourself, please. And you have five minutes.
Mary Jane and Sam Grasso, and we also live up here on the hill. And I can tell you pumps are definitely not cheap. We've gone through in the last, our first pump lasted ten years until more homes were built. And in the last six years, we have professionally had five pumps installed, five. Granted, some of them have been under warranty, but it is a big, big issue. Without a pump, I mean, it'd take me honest to God, three hours to wash a load of clothes. The other concern I have is I'm concerned if they use dynamite up here and shake the earth. I don't know how it all works, but our radon is eighteen up here. I'm not talking four, five, six, it's eighteen. And I want to know if that's gonna emit more radon as it disrupts the earth because that's a big, big issue. But something has to be done about the water pressure. It's it's just not right for us people up here. It's not. That's my concern.
Thank you so much for your time. All right, moving on, I see another person with their hand up, a Justin. Please unmute yourself and introduce yourself and you have five minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I also live in this subdivision. I also want to iterate the concern on waters of pressure issues. It's not just the the replacement cost of these pumps, but it's also the operating cost. These pumps use an exorbitant amount of electricity. Typically, five to six hundred watts when they're running just to supply water pressure that residents think that they, being a part of a city resident, would have normally. Now, again, I don't think that's right for the developer to pass on to the residents of the the subdivision. The other thing in particular that the this developer's plan highlights is not just the operating costs and replacement costs of these pumps, but also the noise. These pumps are very, very noisy. All the existing homes in the subdivision have basements. And so you're able to muffle the sound of these high water pressure pumps in a basement in your utility room. But with a slab on grade house that the noise of these pumps will be within the common areas and adjacent to bedrooms and will be very undesirable to anybody that would build or live in these homes. And I, that's not something that they're gonna that any purchaser of these homes would know up until they've already signed on the dotted line. So there's no protection or notice being provided to allow these residents to make informed purchase decisions, and I think that's wrong.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else would like to speak on this item? All right, we will close the public hearing and invite Mr. Twain or the team back up to respond to some of the comments.
Once again, President Carlson, members of the council, Mayor Norton. Again, we explained to the neighbors that if we do nothing do nothing on this land, their pressure remains the same. The solution to it is, my opinion of fifty four years, have the neighbors petition the city to see if they can get the connectivity to the water main we're installing to help with their pressure. And interim, we found a pump half the price of what was spoken about tonight. Runs at thirty seven decibels, has been installed in one of the homes already in the neighborhood. Would make this information available to anyone who wants it. They could install this pump. It's much, much better and newer operating facility or such pump than what they have in there now. So until they were to get the connectivity, this would be a good solution for them. These are going to go in all the homes that our client is going to sell. They're going to be aware of the water pressure. They'll be aware of the fact they have a pump in there when they're built. So we're disclosing that. We have to disclose that. And again, what backs up what I'm saying is the memorandum from Mr. Newbauer at Public Works, Rochester Public Utilities. I think this long term solution for the fix again is to invite them to petition the city to see if they can feasibly extend water to connect to where we're ending ours at the south end of the property. I guess we we can, anyone else to call me, we left a copy with the clerk as well to show the new pump that's an interim solution for the folks out there.
Okay. Why don't you just pause? I'm sure there will be questions. Who would like to start? With questions for Mr. Twain or staff?
I'd like to see if you mentioned Mr. Newbauer from R P U. Is there anybody from R P U? Or what the standard is for what a neighborhood water P S I should be through public utility?
Council President, Councilmember Keen. Nobody from R P U is here tonight, but through their referral comment is stated that it meets at least whatever the minimum is for that water pressure.
Again, are we aware that like the fifteen versus thirty that, I mean, there's a, obviously, there's got to be some sort of minimum. And this is meeting a minimum?
Yes, as was written in the letter. But we can always reach out to R P U for that specific number.
Okay. Oh, that's it. That's the only question.
I guess my question is around at least it was in the packet that this development won't negatively impact the existing properties from a water pressure perspective. Can you just explain that? I don't know which one of you would like to do that. Mr. Twain, start.
Well, typically, it's not about supply. It's about the elevation. And in our location, we'll have a little bit more pressure than they will, but we're not taking away from their pressure. So it's just about, you know, if your water tower is here, it's a low level system. Water is going to come down. Hydrostratic pressure is going to go up as you go here, but when you start reaching equalization, then you start losing pressure. And what we're saying is that to gain that, it will go to the Willow, Willow Creek Heights water tower system to the south and west of the site, much, much higher. So it is a working head that's much more. That will increase their pressure. That will increase the pressure for the subdivision as well. We meet the minimum standards and we're not taking away any pressure from the one that's there now. We're also upgrading the size of the water services into the homes, which will help with with a lower pressure until we get connected to the Willow Creek one.
And staff, that is your understanding as well?
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Twain. I also would like to make the point, though, that this is already plotted. And so if somebody could build a house today, there's fifteen lots. So we're adding realistically seven. R P U doesn't see that as being an issue with whatever calculation that they do to measure that. And as Mr. Twain, no, excuse me, as Mr. Twain had stated that it's not an issue of capacity, it's an issue of that water pressure.
Okay. Mr. Palmer, a question?
How are we at with this Park Department letter? Is that something we've accepted and?
Yes, so there's something we've accepted and the condition is written so that it can reflect that updated letter.
So we don't have to in our, and making a motion, we don't have to do that?
To my lo, yeah, to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ms. Dennis?
Yeah, I was trying to look at some of this stuff, but the question about the noise, the radon, things like that, could you address some of the questions that were addressed?
Okay, we're using, excuse me, we're using slab on grades rather than lower level basements. And there's a different technique you use to prevent the radon from seeping up into the home. Once the slab on grade, we have to follow Rochester building code for that radon protection. So we will be putting radon protection on all of the slabs. Much less likely occurrence of a increase in radon when you have a slab versus if you have a basement down the ground.
Okay, okay. So there's no, no health issues. And the noise, I guess I wanted to, that was one of the issues about the replacement costs, the operating costs, noise of I don't know, you addressed with your new pump, but is there any, I guess, any other, I don't know, compensation for residents who are currently living there to to help them through this kind of huge development?
Well. I could have the client address that, but my my concern is right now he's spending eight hundred thousand dollars outside the subdivision to make repairs and finish the plans that previous developer didn't do. So to keep adding more expense to it just makes it higher risk for him, raising the prices to put pumps in everybody's house. But he did take the time to research it. He did take the time to find a pump at eight hundred twenty eight dollars. That would be much less than the two thousand that was mentioned, obviously. And they run at a very low decibel compared to the old pumps, so. We have those available, information available for you.
If I, if I can also add on to Bill's answer there, I just want to note that what they're referring to is the noise in a future built home, not noise affecting these other folks, but irregardless, there isn't a standard in front of you that that addresses what you're looking at tonight. So again, this is a, it's a quasi judicial decision, looking at the findings in front of you. Is that point relevant to any of those findings? And I don't believe it is.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
One last question. Are you using dynamite to put services in?
I'm sorry.
Are you using dynamite to put the services in?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not too familiar with these, so.
Okay. To put the services in the sewer and the water, you're not going to use, you're not going to blast?
Yeah, well, yes, in in our subdivision.
Your insured subdivision, you're going to.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, there's no, and again, there's no public money being expended for this development. It's all being paid for by the developer, so.
All right, Councilmember Keen?
Hey, I'm going to just ask staff. I want to understand there's, there's talk about new retention ponds. I'm not seeing them on the map, so I'm not sure where these are being, where this stuff is happening. Go ahead.
So on the original subdivision plans, there's an outlot A as in Alfred. And the city has approved stormwater detention facilities on that property. It's off off our subdivision site. Just to the sort of the east. And it's adjacent to the highway. I don't know what you have for a drawing. I'm sorry. I don't know what you have in your.
Yeah, again, the Ponderosa Major Land Subdivision and it's between fifty two. I just was, I'd heard about this clear cutting it. That's why I was trying to ask staff, is there, is this really a retention pond that is clear cut?
On this slide you see in the screen up there.
Unfortunately, I don't have that stuff. I'm blank screen.
It would be just the top of that paper. Outlet A is located there, and that's where the stormwater is going to be constructed. And according to the city plans that have already been approved.
So go ahead. Getting references on page one seventy five of your packet.
All right, Mr. Yesser.
Yeah, i- if if you have specific questions on how the retention pond is being constructed, I'd have to defer to my colleagues at Public Works to see if they have some guidance on that. But in terms of constructing it, this was part of the development agreement for this development. This is, this pond is needed to to be able to build these houses. So so while I agree with Mr. Twain's assessment there, it's not like they're just volunteering to do that, right? It's needed for to allow this development to continue forward.
I guess what I heard was, and I didn't hear it from the developer, I heard that there's talk about like, in order to the middle of retain retention, you're going to do a clear cut. And that, I don't think that's true. I'm asking if that's the plan, if that's the city's plan, if how how that came to be the plan.
Yeah, so I, I'm not sure if Dylan or someone from Public Works is on that can address that question. What I would say is however they build that pond would would meet the city's standards for how to how to do those retention ponds. So again, I'm not, I'm not the expert on how those are built, but but they would meet those standards.
Is there anyone from Public Works?
Mr. Dubrowski.
Yeah, good evening, President, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, that is correct. The the retention pond is needed for water quality purposes to to meet the permit requirements to do this additional subdivision. There are trees in that location, so there will be trees that need to be removed to do the grading to construct the pond. As to whether it would just clear cut all the trees, I I don't have the topographic map in front of me, but I would imagine there's still going to be a buffer on the exterior part of that pond that that they don't have to do grading between the pond and the highway, but they're definitely going to have to remove trees to do that grading and construct the pond.
And again, it's not on the 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 plat. It's it's off in this outlot A, and it is between the between the highway to the west of the highway and and the other properties. Do I have it right?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, that's correct. There's a, there's a street that and now I'm forgetting the name of the roadway that you can take to the north that comes down to Eighteenth Avenue and between that roadway and Highway fifty two is where the pond would be would be reconstructed up of the screen of this graphic.
Would that be Woodcrest Southwest?
Ponderosa Place. Ponderosa Place.
Yeah, has that renamed? The other maps have it as Woodcrest all the way up to where it meets Red Pine.
That could be, I'm looking at the.
Yep.
The G I S.
I noticed they were different. Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Right. Any final questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Otherwise, a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve with the five conditions.
I'll second.
Councilmember Palmer?
I'm kind of familiar with this area and and I think R P U has enough water capacity. And when these houses were built, existing ones, the plumbing code requires you to have a certain pressure. And so they'll put pressure pumps on the houses. And so when they bought the houses, they had the pressure pumps. Some houses in that whole area have too much pressure, so then they have reducing valve put on. But it's the plumber's responsibility at the time of the closing to confirm that they're within the range for the plumbing. So it's really a plumbing code issue and everyone that you get a reduction or you have to have a pump. So and something that needs to be maintained, kind of like a sump pump. If you put a sump pump in every two to three years, you got to replace your sump pump.
All right, thanks. Other comments, questions or comments, discussion? All right, ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Motion carries six one. Councilmember Kirkpatrick voting nay. All right, moving on to G two, back to you, Mr. Mueller for the Major Land Subdivision, number C D twenty twenty three zero one one plat by Hawk Ridge Development to be known as Hawk Ridge South.
Because Council President, Mayor, members of the council, Elliot Mueller, Rochester Community Development. The application before you right now is C D twenty twenty three zero eleven P L A T by Hawk Ridge. The property or the site is located east of Simpson Road, southeast, otherwise known as County Road One, and north of U S fifty two. The request is to subdivide twenty three point nine two acres into ninety residential lots for commonly owned lots and one outlet to be known as Hawk Ridge South. This might look familiar just because that to go through Growth Management Map Amendment and Annexation application that you should have seen in August. It's just the next step in that development process. The planning commission recommends approval with the conditions attached. I would note that the Parkland dedication condition on this application is not going to be cash. It's going to be land. As you can see in the south of that image, so it should be written to say that the land should be conveyed rather than money paid.
And if I could just note that what's being shown on the screen starts on page one ninety six of your packet.
Thank you.
Stand for any questions?
All right, sounds good. Would the applicant or representative of the applicant like to speak?
Mark Welsh with G Keep Engineering, representing the owners of Big Le homes. And essentially, we're in agreement with all the conditions. I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. We will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item, G two? If you're joining virtually, use the raise hand function or press star nine. Seeing no one will close the public hearing. Are there any questions of staff or the applicant? Mr. Keen?
Oh, yeah, I guess I just wanted to ask that applicant, there was discussions when construction started that we were going to try to do a construction road. I'm not seeing it on here, but I understand it's trying to be worked out. I'm not seeing it on here, but I understand it's trying to be worked out.
Yes, actually, we got clarification through the Environmental Department at Homestead County that we can actually do a temporary crossing of the, there's a gap from the Decor Edge and where there's a wetland. And so we can do a pipe there where we can actually run construction equipment, so they aren't going through the existing neighborhoods. There's a section that we have to go off of, kind of one to the unnamed road that connects to Twenty-Ninth, I think it is. But we'd be able to go up the stub of Williams Road and, and over to the construction entrance from the south as opposed to coming in from the north.
Would, would it be your preference that this not be a condition, and I'll just take your word, we're going to do it this way?
Yeah, so we still need the easement from the prior owner across that area.
That's what, I, I know it's still a little messy, but I'm trusting you're going to do the right thing.
We are trying to get that so that the construction equipment doesn't have to go through the existing neighborhood, yes.
Okay, then I also wanted to ask, we, we approved this general development plan, say, two and a half years ago? We have this commercial part and then residential part. The commercial part includes an existing road, Twentieth Avenue, that's connecting to, and I, I think it's some sort of private property right now. As part of this project, are you, are you taking on and proving that road and turning it over to the city?
And that is part of the original owner's property, and so we'd have to talk to them whether or not they're willing to do something to dedicate that to the city. Because I, I believe they're getting at is, there is no easement as of right now. They put that in there as a convenience to the people that were buying the lots back in like two thousand and two. So that is something we definitely, they would be open to listen to if the city wanted to.
Is my understanding from with the general development plan that we approved, that when we approve that, when that commercial property is developed, that will become a city, that, that'll be brought up to standard that the city will take it back over?
Correct, it is just a temporary road that the developer put in to benefit the people that were buying it. It was, I don't even know if it was ever a requirement by the city, I don't believe it was. So we definitely would take it up with Public Works to figure out what's the best path forward. Because as of right now, I don't know that there's any commercial plans in the forefront, I don't know that there's.
That, that's my concern here with my questions, that, that how long would it be before that gets developed? And if that road is deteriorating, should it be closed?
And it's going on in twenty years, so.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, I think there's, again, I don't know if Public Works can help me, I think the city is maintaining it in terms of snow, but I don't think there's any improvements going on there. And frankly, there probably should not be until it's a city property.
That would be something separate from this development, but we definitely would work with them because we're still working with the original owner, the Queen Star family, or Schoenfelder family, Queen Star LLC.
Right, right, the only thing it'd be, you're applying new load to that road right now if we approve this, and it's in that range of ninety lots. So I think it is relevant to, to our approval. Again, Public Works, did you have any comments on this?
Mr. Dabrowski?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, President, members of the council. We are currently maintaining that roadway just in the winter time, as it relates to plowing, however, any other maintenance is the responsibility of the private property owner at this point. So we do get a lot of calls about the condition, and we share that with the property owner.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it is a city street at some point there, I, I don't, I'm not going to, probably around Twenty-seventh Street, something like that. It could be closed down because there are many, there are other exits that could, could be used, but I hope that's not the plan, I just didn't know of. But there is no plan with the residential development to do any improvements.
Correct.
Not at this point, and we, we do not have anything in the CIP, you know, it would have to wait until future development occurs.
Okay, good, I, again, I, I did not, I don't have another plan, I just wanted to get it out into the discussion. Thanks.
Councilmember Palmer?
While you're up here, Mr. Keen brought up an issue that you're going to have a temporary construction road, is that what you expect all the construction workers to drive on?
We're hoping, most people will be coming from probably the Highway fifty-two corridor, and so it'll be the shortest distance for them. If somebody lives to the north or to the east, then they may come along Mayo or Pinewood Road.
So if we had a condition number seven that you'd be acceptable to that, and then put a sign up that says no construction traffic in the existing neighborhood?
Well, the concern on that is there may be some, some construction equipment that, and also are we talking about during road construction or housing construction?
Both.
Okay, so the, the one item that we don't have yet is an easement from the owners to the south, the Queen Star LLC, which is the Schoenfelder family. They've been open to the idea of it, and the road is already graded, I think it's the extension of Williams Drive. And so I don't see it as an issue, I prefer it as not being a condition, and we can hopefully in good faith put that temporary road in there. But the environmental statement, I believe, or the statement from Environmental Homestead County, I believe, said that we can use it for temporary for construction. I don't know if we'd have to put a time limit on it. We're definitely willing to do something, but I'm just not sure when we'd have to get that temporary culvert out of there. Because it is going across a ephemeral stream fed by the Decor Edge.
Well, for, for my experience in subdivisions, when they, even when they're building the houses, that you get a lot of traffic, and, and we get neighbors who don't like that, which I, I understand why. So I don't know if anybody else would be wanting to put another condition on there. But my experience is that we need to have that as a condition. Mr. Keen, what are you thinking?
I, I, I've had this discussion with the development team, but also Public Works. And my concern would be is there's something out of our control? Then once we have it in a condition and we can't meet it for reasons other than our own control, we'd be stalling a development that we want to get going. So that's why I was not moving towards a condition. I was trying to get Mark's good faith reputation online here to say, we're going to do this and we're going to use it. And I, I guess I'm, that's where I think is the best thing for the city to do at this point.
He does come here a lot, so.
I could foresee the owners of the easement wanting to have a time limit on it. They had a time limit on the previous temporary access that Bigelow's used for Hawk Ridge. And that was expected, that would be built out within a couple of years, it didn't happen, they ended up ultimately essentially purchasing that easement. And so it cost them quite a bit more to obtain that temporary access from Hawk Ridge to the east. So I don't want to put anybody in a position that we, like I said, I don't want a condition that then comes back to haunt us, and we got to come back to you guys and explain why we couldn't get the easement, so.
Well, I also don't want thirty-five neighbors showing up telling me we got construction traffic running up and down the road, so.
Understand that too, but I think it's Twenty-third Avenue on the east side is, was always the intended location for construction equipment. And we've been offering to come in from the south versus the north, so.
If Mr. Keen doesn't see a problem, I don't see a problem.
I, I'm worried about it, but I think I, I don't, I don't want to put conditions that end up being outside of our control.
Let's get a motion before any more perspectives are shared.
I'll make a motion to approve with the six conditions.
I'll second.
All right. Council President Carlson, we do need to state the condition, I had it in front of me and then I left. The Parkland condition specifically says cash, and, and we needed to say land. So it is condition number three, should read prior to recording the final plot application, Parkland dedication must be, must be met.
Okay, is that amenable to you?
Yes.
And you?
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Palmer, you have the floor.
And, and as far as the condition goes, how come this can't be done before the meeting? Was this like at five o'clock to decided to do the land?
No, this was the wording that we received, and we didn't, we weren't flagged it until late.
Until when?
Until late, so we didn't have a chance to fix it.
Late six o'clock tonight, or last Thursday, or?
No, I, I don't know exactly when we found out about it, so.
Okay.
But yeah, this was the wording that we received from the Parks Department, so it's likewise with the prior one.
I appreciate that, thank you, nothing else.
Any other discussion?
No, nothing yet.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries six to one, with Councilmember Kirkpatrick voting nay. All right, back to Mr. Mohler for item G three, which is the zoning map amendment number CD twenty twenty-three zero zero seven ZC by Farmland LLC Mercy Hill.
Thank you, Council President, Mayor, members of the council, Elliot Mohler, Rochester Community Development. The request before you tonight is to change the zoning district of twelve point seventeen acres of twenty-eight, excuse me, twelve point seventeen acres of a twenty-eight acre site from R one mixed single family to R two single family small lot. The location of the site is west of Highway fifty-two, south of Sixty-fifth Street Northwest, and east of the Orchard Ridge subdivision. Just as a quick refresher, R two is an allowed zoning designation in the low density residential land use. And as far as our department is concerned right now with that, that they're compatible, R two and R one. And Planning Commission recommends approval of the zoning change, change request, and they forward that on to you.
And the reference on the screen is on page two hundred and twenty-six of your packet. All right, with the applicant or representative of the applicant like to speak? If you're joining virtually, you use the raise hand function or press star nine. Are we expecting somebody, Mr. Mohler?
They were at the planning commission meeting.
I don't see anyone on the list on Zoom that would be. All right, well, we will open the public hearing, is there anyone who would like to speak? Come on up. Please introduce yourself, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, hello, my name is Robert Andrews, I live immediately to the property adjacent to the west of the one being discussed here tonight. My concern, not necessarily so much over the R one, R two change, but as part of the subdivision development in general, they are planning to clear cut a large number of trees, including a solid tree line that our neighborhood relies on for both a sound and light barrier from the commercial district on Rome Circle. So I would just ask for a consideration in this development that they look to keep that existing tree line on the west edge of the property serving as that barrier. That's my concern, I'd like to bring you tonight, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, would anyone else like to speak on this item? Last call, all right, we'll close the public hearing. Other questions of staff? Ms. Dennis, or Councilmember Dennis?
Okay, well, thank you, yeah, definitely the question about the trees. I, I don't know if this is something we can address, but trees are, are very, very important. We are investing a lot to, you know, increase our tree canopy. I just wanted to see if there's any way of wording it so that those trees can be preserved.
So this is the zoning map amendment, so it's.
Can't condition, yeah. But it's not germane, thank you, Council President, but Councilmember Dennis, those properties to the east on the M X G are required to have a pretty heavy buffer yard for any development that occurs there. So, and that's abiding the R two, so the higher density residential, so the Unified Development Code does put out there that there's a required buffer. Doesn't impact the trees, but that's not part of this discussion for the zone change.
How does that go, okay, for future then, how do they go, residents try to protect the trees? If it's not part of this discussion, what avenue should they go to try to save those?
Yeah, so that would be during the preliminary plat process.
Okay, that's the way.
So you'll see that coming forward, I'm not sure the timeline, but eventually.
I would, I would also just add that the city doesn't have a true tree preservation ordinance. So these, these trees are not on their property, so the property owner has, has the, the rights to do what they, they want with those trees as it sits. So we have landscaping requirements and those buffering requirements like Elliot was talking about, but we don't have a true tree preservation ordinance, and so there isn't a true ordinance to protect the trees specifically.
So that's like a future ordinance we should pass?
Something you could consider.
Preservation, okay, thank you. All right, other questions, Councilmember Wall?
Thank you, it's not a question so much as an observation, I was at the neighborhood information meeting for this, and I was the only person who was not connected with the property who showed up, so. Seemed like the neighbors must have been okay with the notifications that went out.
Other questions? Nope, sorry, the public hearing's been closed, thank you. Sir, thank you, we don't allow comment right now, are there, is there a motion, if not, any more questions?
I'll move to approve the zoning map amendment and direct the city attorney to prepare the ordinance for first reading.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, again, I, I think we've got to watch which business we're doing here right now, the, the business right now is the rezoning, it's in. I, I think the Unified Development Code does have buffering, yard buffering, and it should make it so that the idea of keeping the trees there would, would support their thing. But, so with that, and I guess I, I do want to, again, I think there's, I appreciate that someone come to the public hearing and ma- make their comments. And again, I don't mean to be, you know, not taking them, but there's a place where we can do more of that business and some places where we can't.
Yeah, and I just appreciate the increased density and getting some more properties on the, or excuse me, housing on those lots, so. Like to see more density closer in, but. Councilmember Kirkpatrick, tree preservation ordinance?
Oh, of course that, but not right now. Is there anybody from parks or forestry, or maybe CD could help answer this question? We were just beautifully awarded a million dollars for a tree grant. So very excited about putting more trees in, in our community here. However, that tree grant says that our canopy will go from twenty-eight percent up to thirty-five percent. But when the unified, excuse me, when the Urban Forest Master Plan was presented to us last November, I believe it was stated that our tree canopy was forty-five percent. So I'm wondering, when the drop went from forty-five down to twenty-eight, what, what is that due to? Is there anybody that can?
So I definitely appreciate your question, but it's not germane to this. I can, I think it may be the difference between publicly, trees on public property versus the overall tree canopy.
That's what I wondered, because of the forty-five percent tree canopy that we had last November, sixty-five percent of that is on private lands, meaning we have far less on public land, so I just, I, I wondered if that's what the difference was. And I do think it's germane, because we've got people coming up talking about tree canopies, we've got people talking about clear cutting for stormwater retention.
We do, but it's not related to a zoning change.
It isn't, but I wanted to ask the question, so thank you, I appreciate the answer, Ms. Ellen.
And we can get back to you with the specifics of what was referenced in the grant, which is probably the specific locations where it would anticipate planting.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion carries. Yes, eight thirty, okay?
Yep.
All right, so we're back here at eight thirty.
Recording stopped.
Keep up with delivering the really high quality services and supports and resources we provide across the community. If you look closely at the budget, the the places where we are growing and those decision packages that have been presented to us are really thoughtful and in fact demonstrate a way of increasing efficiency in many areas. And I just really appreciate that it's coming from an administration who's thinking well into the future and how we manage the budget long term and not just the impact in on this particular year, but how are we looking at issues around workforce in our fire department for in for instance, I'm really thinking about our called community context and our changing demographics in our community to support this diverse and richly wonderful community we call Rochester, Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, again, I'm, I, I, I wish we were not approving a nine point four percent increase. Again, it's, it feels high to me. But after going through the studies of it, what we're really dealing with is these higher inflation years where we're we're making the policy decisions to hold services where they are with some exceptions. And withholding services where they are, that's really keeping people in their positions and both in the in public works and public in, in, in public safety. So that's really where we're spending the majority of the the increases are coming from. We're also fighting with some catch up things with where we, we kept all our services through COVID, through COVID, but didn't do our, our commensurate raises there. So I hopefully will get caught up. I, I, I just don't feel great right now when I look at the out years and say, we're still going to be in this, you know, seven to nine percent sort of numbers just to keep services going. I think it does reflect some of the competition for talent, but I also think it, it just puts more and more more of a challenge on the staff here that we have to be able to do more with the, the staff we have going forward. But I, again, I'm prepared to support the levy as presented tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. And I appreciate that the nine point four four percent is not necessarily was going to show up on people's property taxes either, the city portion of those taxes. Certainly if people's house valuations have gone up a lot, their taxes are going to go up as well. But I refer again to slide eighteen of our last study session in which the county indicated that a two hundred thousand dollar house, the tax rate, the, the dollars from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four is about forty-five dollars ninety-four cents increase. A half million dollar house, the increase would be one hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-six cents. There are a lot of other variables that play into that, but that doesn't seem terribly unreasonable in the times in which we live for a year over year increase.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Other Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
I just want to say, I guess I agree with you, Mr. Keen, and also you, Mr. Wall. I'm disappointed to see that our taxes continue to go up, but at the same time, how do you expect to pay for an infrastructure in a city that is growing at the rate that we are growing? We need to either have some very, very creative thinking about doing this, but if we continue to annex properties and add more infrastructure, if we continue to bring people into our town, that's going to demand more water, that's going to demand more transportation for foods. Growth demands funding. And how, how can we continue to fund our growth at the rate we're going? We have staff that are challenged to do the work that's asked of them. We've seen that there's only been a slight seventeen percent growth rate of staff over these decades, yet look at how much larger our city has grown. So I'm happy to support this tonight, also knowing that it will not get any higher, but if we are really thinking sustainably and resiliently, resilience is really the word, sustainability was the catchword, geez, I don't know about thirty years ago. So I think we need to kind of get with the program and mode shift. It's not about growing, it's about being better at what we're doing, being more efficient, being more effective and learning together and growing as a community, not necessarily economically, but growing as a community to work together and yeah, so that's it. Thanks. Thanks for the work you've done on the budget and I'm hoping that we can get it to go down as well.
And that is such a good point about growing outward and building infrastructure that needs to be maintained over time.
Thank you.
Other comments? Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you. So I was reviewing the study session from last Monday, and we've had a lot of these high overview study sessions. They are very vague, they're very, you know, lacking a lot of detail. I had questions, a lot of more questions about the city attorney's budget and some of the wording he had in, in the study session. I, I just, after talking to a few of the department heads, it was difficult to get meetings with them just a fifteen minute phone call. I just, I don't feel comfortable with the vagueness of this. I, I feel transparency is trust and budget transparency is needed. I feel that if there was more care taken to describe what's being done to cut wasteful spending, I have, I sent some emails this morning that clearly show that there is wasteful spending happening in our, in our city, and then we're asking for more money. I, I feel that this is something that needs to be addressed first and with a conscience of not wanting to burden the already struggling taxpayers with an incredible increase in taxes that I can't, I can't fully explain and justify. I, I just can't, I can't vote for this high increase of, of the budget increase. I, I think that we could do better if we had more time, more one-on-one with, you know, a past council, like I mentioned, has gone through line item by line item, some, some of the budget. And if, if we don't truly understand where we can cut costs and where we can, you know, like what can creative thinking like Councilmember Kirkpatrick mentioned, there is ways besides using regressive form of taxation, like sales and property, particularly property tax to, to fund everything. We, we can, like I mentioned with the study session, if you didn't get a chance, anyone who is watching this meeting, I would think it would be good to look back on the three thirty meeting, but LGA, different other forms of revenue that can use be used for operating expenses that do not go through property tax, I think we should explore further. So I, I just, not to this level and not to this explanation, can I vote for this? Thank you.
Any final discussion?
If I could just share for the public that our flipping book that has all of that detailed information is available on our website and has been there, it does also a link that's in the, in the council materials. So all of that's available and we are relying on local government aid within this budget in order to provide the resources. So I just think it's important for the public to be aware of that.
Thank you, Ms. Alms, Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, again, I, I just that last comment from Councilmember Dennis that the LGA is the way out of this. The LGA is being used, it's in a part of this budget, there's different sources and uses of the money. And if we, we, we have spent a lot of time to try to get into that and go through it. It is a lot to absorb, but this idea that we are going to individually go through line item by line item, what the Public Works Director is doing or what the Community Development Works Director is doing, and that's the savior of how to do budgeting. That, that's just the wrong direction. I'll say it right up, right up front. There, there's plenty of good reasons why you could come to the point that you wouldn't be able to support this budget. I'm fine with that. But this idea that we're not working hard enough or we're not showing enough of it is, is just not what I've been seeing for the last five years on this council.
To clarify, Carlson, to clarify, that was one example. When I talk about creative ways, I'm, I'm like, we're looking, we have so much money we put in consultants. I mean, instead of putting into in-house and maybe fostering some of the programs that we have instead of going through these bidding processes, which many I believe are not competitive. I feel there has been use of funds that we could have had more, you know, looking at options, different RFPs and different things that we could have got more, you know, better deals for our city. Like I mentioned, I, I'm not going to share the emails that I have, I've shared this morning with staff. I mean, anyone can, anyone can data, data pull and find those, or I can send them to you if you wish. But it, there is things here that are clear misuse of, 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 I believe, the staff time and, and we could do better. We could, we could do better with what we have. We could cut things that we, we don't need. Focus on like our speaker this at the, the open comment. Focus on our priorities, put money into what we value and, and, and I, I just, I don't think this property tax increase needs to be this big. I mean, we, yes, we want to have services. Yes, we want to have safety and response times and, and I'm in all this, this all or nothing, kind of like the city administrator often uses, well, what do you want to do, Councilmember? Get rid of the library? That is a comment I hear a lot.
I believe that came from a Councilmember point of order.
That is not. So those kind of all or nothing, I mean, we need to be more in the process. And I've heard from past councilmembers, and I believe that this council is being taken out of the process of this budget and not given all the information like, like Councilmember Palmer mentioned with the attorney's budget at the last meeting. This, this, we just need more transparency and more accountability. And I think until I can fully, you know, put my name to this with, with true conviction, I, I just can't tell residents their, their property taxes going so high up and that there was things that could have been done to keep it lower. Thank you.
So just a reminder, this is our preliminary tax levy. It can, there are several months left to work with staff if you do have specific concerns on where to make reductions. Councilmember Palmer.
Well, I'm, I'm the person that has said in the past, if you want to cut something nine hundred thousand dollars, please come back with a plan. I have used the example of, do you want a library or not? I like the library. I don't want to cut the library, but that's something that I've said. As far as competitive bidding, everything that we do is competitively bid, I believe, over a certain price. The state of Minnesota requires that. Sometimes we do not get multiple people who bid. That is not something from us that, that we can do differently. It was competitively bid out there, so that would be wrong and not transparent to tell people that we're not bidding projects because we are bidding projects. If you have ideas that you want to cut, I'd be more than willing to, to hear them. I've not heard it and we started this program, I think, back in March on the budget and sat and listened to the budget. I know quite a few council members and, and I passed council members and I've asked them all about your suggestion that we all go line by line and they've never heard of that. They typically didn't get the budget until October and they sat for eight hours at a time and, and went over it. That was fine. That was the way they did that budgeting. Things have changed. I'm very proud of the way that the city council is, and the city administrator is very much in being honest and upfront with everything. It's our decision. It takes four of us to make a decision. We'll see how this vote goes, but I'm assuming it's going to be a six, one vote.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. Do you have a final comment?
I just have one more comment. I guess this is not the first time in the last year that I've heard this from this council that there's malfeasance or there's misspending going on. I've done some research to try to find out what those are and they all lead to dead ends. And I'm not going to waste any more time trying to find out what those are, but I just want to say from the, from the council up here that anyone listening to this and hearing about this might be shocked. It is not happening. And if it were, it would be discussed up here and there'd be repercussions.
Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Right, motion carries with Councilmember Dennis voting nay. All right, we are moving on to item H two, which was F sixteen. Councilmember Wall pulled this item, let me just pull it up, which is the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program Pilot Implementation on Forty-Eighth Street Northwest and Nottingham Drive Northwest. And I'll turn it over to you, but we do have, is Sam Pedzina on? Yes, if there are questions, go ahead.
And at the outset, you just want my reasons as to why I pulled it.
Yeah, or you could make a motion.
Okay. I'll, I'll move that we approve F sixteen.
Second.
All right, back to you, Councilmember Wall.
So I pulled it for two reasons. One is to thank the city staff for what they have done in hearing the community. This has been an issue from the time I was walking these roads a year ago campaigning for this position. And people were worried about the Lincolnshire splash pad and how that might add traffic. People saw videos this winter of cars crashing into trees. This has really been quite a little saga on Forty-Eighth and, and near Lincolnshire. The staff has gone out and listened. They have done open houses. Even the director of Park and Recs, Paul Widman, and I were standing with neighbors there and listening to some of their worries about the city street. So the fact that the city staff has done this very good work, come up with four different options and choosing to go ahead with one of them tonight, I think speaks very well of our staff and the responsiveness to some of the needs in our community. Certainly one of those needs is traffic calming. The second reason that I pulled this is because when I got to the, the four options, the number four is the recommended option. And even though it's the recommended option, it's not the one that is proposed for this night, instead choosing a much, a much less expensive option. So I'm wondering why we are, it's cost, obviously, why we're not going with the recommended option, which would give the best results to the community if spending the money on the pilot project is money well spent.
Hi, Mr. Pedzina, go ahead when you're ready.
Yeah, thank you, President Carlson, and good evening at mayors and council members. And I thank you, Councilmember Wall, for those comments. I definitely appreciate that. So the recommended option number four, our, our engineer's cost estimate for that is two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Our, our budget for the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program is about, the past couple of years has been a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So we're trying to spread out this money as much as we can and meet with as many neighborhoods as we can and just spread that out as much as we can. The option that we are recommending, it, it is option for just using flexible delineators instead of the concrete permanent improvement. So we'll, we'll get those installed as soon as we can here yet this year, and then we'll go out next summer and do another follow-up speed study, see if it's working, see if the neighbors even like it. Do they even want us to do that permanently and spend all that money or not? And, you know, hopefully they will and I will, we'll be able to come back with a, a actual construction project.
Thank you. And that makes great sense to me. On the other hand, if we only have fifty thousand dollars a year, where are we ever going to come up with two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for the recommended option?
He said a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty total.
Right. So how would we come up with two fourteen for one project?
Well, correct, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And we do have some money banked up from some previous years as well that, that we did not get any projects done. We are picking up the momentum to do more projects though. But yeah, it, we may only do, you know, one permanent project a year.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your work. I really do appreciate it, Sam.
Yeah, it's really nice to hear that that was your experience with the process. Great. Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, again, I just want to give a little background in the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. This, this was done not so much as a way of doing capital improvements to city streets, but a way to be more responsive to neighborhood groups who really wanted work done in their neighborhood. It was not meant to replace or to find, or to use as the method of funding capital improvement projects in neighborhoods. That might actually be the long-term answer to the problem on Forty-Eighth Street here, that it's, at some point, the city does find that this is something that needs to be done and it gets in, and it becomes one of our capital projects. The neighborhood, the Traffic Management Program was designed led by your predecessor, I believe, a lot of Nick Campion trying to say when people come forward with these sort of concerns, we have to have a way of engaging with them. And to me, that was much more important part of this of how, how do we engage and not just say like, thanks for your input, but we're going on. So we did fund this. As Sam points out, there's a little trouble getting it going because it's a lot of work. We did something in northeast here about two years ago with a cut through that I think proved to be the same thing where it wasn't the right, it was Jersey barriers. It wasn't, you know, a kind of closing roads. But I think, I mean, I want to stand up for this program more for what it was set up to be as opposed to, hey, we just need to put more money into it and start doing other projects with it. I would be concerned that we do that because then you end up with more or less sending your funding through whoever got the loudest voice or the most, or neighborhood organization, where I think I, I'm more comfortable with the idea of the city staff saying our bigger problems or our gaps are over here and those are the ones we need to, to work on. So I, I think in this case, I, I appreciate that it's, it's not what it could be, but I think just using it this way and keeping it within the financials does make the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program work better. And I, I feel like it's responsive to the residents.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. That is helpful for me as a rookie.
Councilmember Palmer?
Well, I've had a little bit different experience and, and mine is on East River Road. I had neighbors complain and, and I thought nothing wrong with the road and, and I told them that. And so we did a study and Sam came out and did his study and said, yeah, this is the worst one in Rochester. So we came up with a neighborhood meeting. It was during COVID. We had a piece of truck out in the middle of the road at Foster Aaron's Park and designed something and went back and forth. And, and so they did a good job of that. And so I do like the pilots and the reason I like the pilots is that, that if it doesn't work or the neighbors are thinking this and in our traffic management, people are really good at, at listening to, to people and I appreciate that. You know, up at Century, we have worked with the county and we did a roundabout at Century High School and it's a three-year process before in between it, the process starting, we had a, a young man get hit by a car. And, and so that roundabout just got completed and, and I'm proud that the city council and, and the county board decided to fund that. And that, that was one of those projects that took three years to get, to get funded. They also just corrected what was going on in Viola in front of the fire station up there. It was a flashing light that was kind of goofy and, and we redid the lights because we have McDonald's coming up and Quick Trip, and so they made that traffic flow faster. And so, you know, I think the number one complaint that I get, and I know Mr. Wall said the same thing, is, is neighborhood speeding. And the more that we can do to, to help reduce that in our neighborhoods, you know, I mean, everybody kind of laughs at twenty-five mile an hour signs and I don't really believe they work real well, but it helps with our design on our projects. But again, I think we do a scientific study. They do go out and they do do a traffic study. They do tell you whether or not this is working or not. And so it's not just a person who can yell so loud as because, well, I might be able to do that. So I'm proud of what they, they can do. So, thank you.
Mayor North?
Yeah, I will just, I, I try, that made me chuckle. Thank you, Councilmember Palmer. We, it is one of the big complaints that we get at the mayor's office. The phone rings and it is speeding. It is roads with hills. It is, what can you do? And so it is one of those tough dilemmas where we talk to the community about, do you really want, you know, we don't even have enough officers to sit on every road in the city or even every busy road in the city and issue tickets, which just upsets people. But we don't have enough officers to even do that if that's what you wanted to do. And so these projects, this process has really allowed us to see, to prioritize which are the roads based on the calls, based on the research that really deserve our effort. So I think it's been a very worthwhile process and we probably do and will need to continue to do these pilots and move toward permanent solutions. And my hope is, and I think we're doing it on our new roads, we're doing a better job of making sure we don't have these thoroughfares and that's, you know, that's in the long run, the right thing to do. So appreciate you bringing this forward and allowing us to all pontificate, but it's a, it's a great project. Nice to see it getting approved.
Really well said. Good points. Ms. Turry?
Yeah, Mayor, Council President, Councilmembers, I just wanted to also say some, Sam and I talked about this earlier today, this first, I'd say thank you because many of you approved the Assistant Traffic Engineer and that's allowing us to do more. That's why we had a much, a slow start. We just, you know, with just Sam, we just couldn't do it. So thank you. Then you can see kind of that we are able to do more. And then secondly, it is, it's been around for, for, well, it will be five years and I think we'll be looking at that, probably bring a report back, study session and look at other areas where we want to tweak it, what's working, what isn't working, how much are we spending, that kind of thing. So I think, you know, we're already having that kind of conversation.
That's great. Thank you. Ms. Kirkpatrick?
Thanks. I'll just briefly share my little thanks to Public Works for the traffic studies that you do. Only this one, I don't believe really needed a traffic study. It was, well, I guess we were sort of threatened with that roundabout at Eleventh and Center on the east side of downtown and the neighborhood just really did not want that. But fortunately, someone took out the nineteen sixty-five traffic light on the northeast corner and we were told that they would not go back. And so we basically said, yeah, pull those four-way stops out of your storage unit there and you put them in and we saved the city. Well, it was like a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the roundabout, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace the traffic lights. And we just love our little four-way stop. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. Yeah, it works great. But when you redo East Center in twenty twenty-five, we'd like some median beautification.
Take a moment, blister requirements.
So thanks to everything that Public Works does.
All right, ready to vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we let's see, we don't have any council initiated actions, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Spindler Craig to do our first reading and then our second reading of ordinances.
Thank you, Madam President. There is one first reading, item J one, an ordinance amending various sections and tables as outlined in text amendment number C D two zero two three dash zero zero one T A of the, of the Unified Development Code. Moving on to the second reading, item K one, an ordinance annexing to the city of Rochester approximately forty-seven point nine four acres located directly north of Silver Creek Road Northeast. Move approval.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Palmer?
Nothing, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Spindler Craig. We don't have any table items. We do have some other business from Councilmember Dennis. Go ahead.
I put it in, in an email and I appreciate that being spread. So I will, you know, always have other business. Not because necessarily I have something to bring up, but I think that people who come to speak at Open Comment should have their concerns addressed and, and questions answered. So I, I did wanted to point out, there's, there's been a lot of really important information with the ZIPS and transit. I know we had a situation this weekend where ZIPS went down. That is a horrendous situation for those who are struggling. So I, I want to say thank you to, to Ms. Turry and, and Public Works for getting so quickly trying to remedy that problem. But I do feel that we need to put more emphasis, staff and council, and just we need to make sure that people are able to get to where they, we need, need to go regardless of their abilities and challenges. So I, I also, like, if you didn't get a chance to watch the sustainability presentation that covered some of, one of the people who spoke about, I do think that that is a priority of our city and should have more weight. So the environment, I think, I would, I would like to maybe revisit some of the ways of increasing that department. And I'm, I, there's a lot of other, the people experiencing homelessness. I know there's been meetings and I think the comment made that we, we get frustrated when people don't do what we want them to do. You know, I really want to make sure that we don't view it as an inconvenience, but really look at it as, as working with people's lives and, and the very fragile and delicate compassionate way that we need to work with people from all walks of life. So and then the one thing from the mayor's report too, the, the crisis of, of childcare is, is traumatic. I know, I know from my personal experience, having to run out and make sure that my kids have dinner and, and, and you know, go to bed and stuff while they're home alone is, you know, childcare is a huge obstacle for people getting into the workforce and of course a safety and, you know, civil rights issue. So I would love it if Mayor North could share that sixty-page report with the council or at least with me. I would be very interested in hearing what is being done for this right now as I, as I too am working on issues, this issue. And then, and then I just want to say, the budget discussion, I, I had a lot more questions. I kind of toned it down, so I, I will follow up with staff. I do, I do feel I do, I do feel that it's important that, that we have details. And, and efficiency is important, but being thorough with policy is, is vital. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Great, anything else? Sure, councilmember Patrick?
When might the no-day camping ordinance be coming forward?
Thank you, councilmember Kirkpatrick, councilmembers, mayor. A few things in process since, since last week. I sent out to all of you that draft ordinance based on the Portland model of no daytime camping. That seemed to be the focus of the last discussion before council. I was actually hearing some other indicators since then about whether that really was the direction that council wanted, wanted to go. So I'll be honest, it's felt like a little bit of a moving target, but at the same time, understand that you want something back before you to, to discuss. I did loop back with Captain Stillwell today to make sure that I understood what R P D is recommending and asking for from a law enforcement perspective. They are still first and foremost recommending a daytime, no daytime camping ordinance. Ultimately, that is of course your, your matter to consider. I did also confirm with him, as he told you last week, that for R P D, their focus frankly on, on a no camping ordinance is on next spring and preparing for what the spring looks like next year. So I would, would just ask that you be mindful of that as you think about making sure that we get it right and not necessarily quickly. All of that said, we've had some internal discussion, just trying to figure out what the best way is to come back to council with something meaningful to discuss and that may reflect the divergency of options that we've been hearing under consideration. So I would hope to target November to bring back some sort of sense of options for, for you to consider.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up, councilmember Dennis, the Cradle to Career team just sent the mayor and me the draft report, and we're giving feedback this week because we've been involved in the process. They will be releasing the report as part of that October fourth day. So if you haven't signed up already, there's a session specifically on the findings from that assessment, and then I'm sure they'll make that report available to those who are interested. But right now, it's just still a draft, so more soon. All right, motion to adjourn? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned.